This suggested motions and resolutions. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Riddles, seconded by Perito. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next, we'll do our customary spotlight on recognition and I'll ask Dr. Heil to share our spotlight this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Delvo, board members. I am pleased this evening to present our open house workshop that occurred in August. And during this workshop, we welcomed back our licensed teachers. And we also recognized several different categories of our staff. So, one of our first categories were for 25 years of service. And we had three staff members who we recognized through that. Our first one was Debbie Jansen, and she's a kindergarten teacher at Hayes Elementary. Our next person is Janelle Jensen. And Janelle is administrative assistant for the Director of Community Ed. And last but not least, we have Charmaine Kroger, who's a health assistant at Fridley Community Center. We also recognize all of our new staff that joined us this year, so we have some photo-shops for that. We particularly like Mr. Pio Traskey there, so these are the new teachers at Hayes. John wasn't available for pictures, but he was on the phone. These are our new teachers at Stevenson that we welcomed in. Next will be our new teachers at Fridley Middle School. After that, we have our new teachers at Fridley High School. Next, we have our new teacher at the ALC, Fridley ALC. And last but not least, we have our new preschool teachers that also joined us this year. We also recognize several teachers for Teachers of Excellence this year, and we have a group picture of those. So, we have Margot Rothenbacher, who represents Hayes. We have Andrew Heim, representing Fridley High School. We have Carrie Ryder, representing Fridley Middle School. Mike Kozerek, representing Stevenson. And Nicole Allen, representing Fridley Community Center, as well as ALC. And each year, we choose an Employee of the Year, and we were very excited, and I get to sit next to that honored guest. So, the Employee of the Year this year was Lori Handler. And Lori's position is she's an Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and to the school board. So, we'd like to send out a huge thank you again, and congratulations to all of our staff that we recognized this year.
Alright. Thank you. It's good to see the new crop of teachers in, and I've heard good things about that it was an exciting opening workshop, and people are ready to go for the year. Next up, our superintendent and staff reports. And I'd like to invite up Sue Davis. And she is going to talk about the American Field Service program at Fridley High School. And you've been a long timer with that program, so welcome back.
That's on my little cue card here. Thank you for welcoming us. And I also was anxious to meet Dr. Heil.
Good evening.
So, I am a volunteer for American Field Service intercultural programs. Make it easy, it's AFS. And then also, I was, I'm pretty accurate here, AFS has been a part, the program has been a part of Fridley High School for 51 years.
Wow.
And because I have, the first two or three families that hosted at Fridley were members of St. Phillips Church. So, I am proud to say that I have met every AFS student since the beginning. And of course, some I knew a whole lot better. But, interesting, the first AFS student I met was with a teacher here at Fridley High School, and it was a boy from Germany. Okay. And tonight, we have Richard from Germany. And I'd like him to come up now and tell him, tell you all about him and what his experience is so far. And you'll be surprised to know who his host family is, right? And also, he enjoys answering questions at the end. Okay, Richard?
Welcome, Richard.
Hey.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Richard Cooperman. I'm from Germany.
Yeah.
Oh.
A little bit taller.
You can just take it off.
I think it's good.
There.
Yeah. And, yeah, I'd like to tell you something about my city in Germany where I live. The name of the city is Erfurt. It's not very big, it's about 200,000 inhabitants. And I think the closest big city is Berlin. Maybe you heard about it? And I've got two older brothers and one older sister. And maybe some differences between my school in Germany and the school is that if I want to do sports in school, I have to join a club and not, that it's in school. But I think it's pretty good that it's in school. I'm in the soccer team, and I had a game today. I am in the JV team. And, yeah, why I wanted to be a student is because I'm interested in another culture and another language. Because I think it's pretty important to know how other people in another country live. And my host family is Ivana and Mike. And, yeah, thank you to everyone. I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
Just wait for questions.
I'll open it up for questions. You can't ask any, Ivana. At least till we're done.
I'll ask a question.
Yeah.
What has been your biggest highlight of being in Minnesota specifically, since you've been here?
I think it was the state fair. I've been there with my host family for 12 hours. And it was pretty cool.
What did you try? You must have tried some type of food or something fried, deep fried?
Everything was pretty good. Yeah.
Did you have Martha's cookies?
Yes.
Sorry.
Martha's cookies?
Yeah.
I finally found somebody to share the deep fried candy bar with me. Nobody else in our family will do that except for Richard.
Do they have something like that where you're from?
No.
Do they have some, no type of state fair type of gathering?
The Oktoberfest in Bavaria is quite similar, but I've never been there, so I don't know.
And what about the Mall of America? Have you been there?
Oh, yeah. I've been there, I think, twice. And it's pretty big.
So, also, tell them a little bit more about your mother and father, what they do, brothers and sisters.
Okay, my dad is an architect. My mom is a dentist. And my brothers and sisters are in a university. And, yeah.
Do you also learn English at school in Germany?
I think I learned English for four years, so I hope it's not too bad.
Very well. It's very good. Did you play soccer back home? Or is that a new sport to you that you're playing here at Fridley?
I played it just for fun with my friends. So, it's new to play it in a team. But it's pretty cool. Yeah.
How did you guys do today?
We won 2-1.
Yay! What, your house back in Germany, is it comparable to living here? Is it like multiple bedrooms? Do you find that the spacing is pretty much the same? Or is it a lot different culturally, living dinnertime, breakfast time?
I think it's, um... Yeah, I think it's not very different, so, yeah. But the, maybe it's important to say that in summer, it's not as warm as here, and in the winter, it's not as cold as here. My family told me that it's pretty cold here.
How cold does it get where you're from?
I think the coldest is 14 degrees.
Oh, my.
Fahrenheit.
You're gonna love it here. Well, we are glad you're with us.
Yes.
And we hope you have the best year at Fridley High School.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for continuing to bring students to us each year.
Well, thank you. It's always nice to see you all. And he hasn't had supper.
Uh-oh.
He has homeworks.
She's Ivana.
I know.
How many students have came through?
Fridley High School?
Through what you've been doing, through the exchange, how many students have?
Right now, I have Springlee Park, St. Daniel, Tatina Grace, and Fridley.
Oh, wow.
And we usually have between four and seven students that I oversee.
Wow. Each year.
I find families, or the State Department, as you probably could guess, has many, many, many rules and stipulations. So, every student has to have a liaison. I like my students to have an aunt and uncle family. And their aunt and uncle family is Dan and Connie Bernardi. Does that name?
Oh.
And I take the students to meet the school board, just like tonight. Springlee Park is done, so I have two to go. And then I also will be taking Richard to meet the mayor at Fridley City Hall.
Oh.
And at that time, I will give him a little flag of Germany to present to the mayor. And in return, the mayor gives him a proclamation, whereas, you know how that goes, with two gold seals on the bottom, making Richard an honorary citizen of the city of Fridley for the duration of the state.
That's awesome. Good job.
He just gets nervous. It's okay, very nice. And we do a lot of fun things. We took, last year, we took the kids to the Ice Castle in Stillwater.
Oh, that's nice.
And Minneapolis and St. Paul were divided between east and west metro, because of the size. And east metro has 52 students, and west has about the same. And so, there are mandatory orientations in the beginning, in the middle of the year, before the kids go home. And that's at east metro. And therefore, many of the things that we do are just chapter events. Those orientations are mandated by the State Department. And of course, there's three big rules with AFS. No drinking, drugs, driving, or hitchhiking. And hitchhiking is a little bit...
Is that right?
But in Europe, it's still a common, backpacking and hitchhiking is still a common mode of transportation. But here, we just kind of tell the kids, make sure you have a, when you get in a car with someone for a drive, make sure it's a friend that you know and know something about. So...
Good job, Matthew.
And AFS works with probably about 80 different countries around the world. There's hardly a country that isn't involved on. So, and way back, remember when the Iran crisis was? We had Mohammed from Iran. He stayed with Pastor Jacobson and his family. This Muslim student lived with a Lutheran pastor, had a wonderful year. And then, you know, then all that chaos broke out. And we tried to get him to stay here, but he had to go back home, because they figured he could go home safely. And then a year or so later, he did come back and lives longer with the, our pastor and his family. And he ended up being a professor at the University of Minnesota. And I think he's maybe still there. I kind of lost contact with him. But it's a small world when you have one to start.
Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you for coming, Richard.
Now, go have dinner.
I'll see you when you have school conferences, because we'll set up a day at this table.
Oh, nice.
Okay. Thank you.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Dr. Heil, I'll invite you to talk about the School Resource Fair.
Alrighty. I'm excited. We had our School Resource Fair was held on August 25th. And we had an excellent turnout. There was a line outside the door before we even, it was time to start. This was spearheaded by Alota Sims, who is our district's family school liaison. And it was a great connection with our community members, all for the goal of helping our Fridley families. So, please enjoy this outstanding video done by Communication Department highlighting the School Resource Fair.
We are so excited to be able to provide an outreach service to our community. We are so excited to help our kids be successful. We are so excited to bridge that gap with our families, that we can provide a need for them that is necessary. And right now, we are feeling so overjoyed that the community came out, the staff and the administration has came out. We are partnering with the whole community to make sure that our kids are ready, excited, and definitely putting that great foot forward to start our new year off right.
So, basically, if I could put in words, this is what life is about. We're here to support our community, support partnerships, support our families. If they need something, we want to be here for them. So, what makes this event so much more beautiful is we have members of the community donating to our students. We have incredible partnerships that's going on. And it just kind of gives you goosebumps, so everyone has come together for our Fridley students.
It was a great, great turnout. And they keep adding more things for the families. And there was even a part, once the families went outside, there was actually an organization that had clothes. The families could go in, and everything from coats to shoes, different sizes. So, it was just a, it was just a very heartwarming family affair, so it was very nice.
And I think that's grown each year since this is the fourth, is it the fourth or fifth year that it's, is it that many already? That means I'm getting older, too. Well, thank you for that. It's always good, the video always helps to get the flavor of the day versus just a verbal report, so thank you for that, Dr. Heil. Now, we'll move to the business action items of our meeting. And starting out with the resolution for accepting gifts. School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district, and we always do a resolution for accepting these. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary School. Perigo, a donation of school supplies. Menko, classroom supplies. Presbyterian Church of the Way, money towards headphones. Fridley Lions Club, $100 gift cards to teachers for school supplies. The following persons donated to Hayes Elementary School for a total of $232.79, a donation by an anonymous donor. Food Perspectives, Deanna Roth. Fridley Lions Club, $100 gift cards to teachers for school supplies. The following persons donated to Fridley Middle School for a total of $40.01, another anonymous donor, and Food Perspectives. The following persons donated to Fridley High School for a total of $26, and that was, again, by an anonymous donor. And the following persons donated to Fridley Athletics and the Sideline Program for football. Ryan and Sean Gerhard, and that their donation was for $1,500, and two iPad Pros. So, as you can see, we are fortunate to have great support by our community. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts as stated?
Still moved.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. And this is a resolution, so clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Resolution has passed. We have another resolution to follow that one up. And this is providing for the sale of obligation taxable OPEB refunding bonds, Series 2018A, and covenanting and obligating the district to be bound by and to use the provision of the Minnesota Statute, Section 126(c) 55, to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest of these bonds. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 14 as follows. Bond Authorization. The School Board has determined that it is necessary and expedient to issue 2.46 million general obligation taxable OPEB refunding bonds, Series 2018A. The Sale. The district has retained Ellers and Associates in Roseville, Minnesota, as an independent municipal advisor for the bonds. Ellers is authorized to solicit proposals in accordance with Minnesota statutes. Official Statement Negotiation of Sale. Ellers is authorized to prepare and distribute the official statement and to open, read, and tabulate the proposals to the board. And the Minnesota School District Credit Enhancement Program. The district hereby covenants and obligates itself to notify the Commissioner of Education of a potential default in the payment of principal and interest on the bonds, and to use the provision of Minnesota statutes, 126(c) 55, to guarantee payment of the principal and interest on the bonds when due. The district further covenants to comply with all procedures now and hereafter established by the Departments of Management and Budget and Education of the state of Minnesota, and otherwise to take such actions as necessary to comply with that section. The motion for adopting of the foregoing resolution was duly, I need a motion to adopt the foregoing resolution.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Perito, seconded by Thornton. All those in, I'm sorry?
I just want to, just to think, Matt, can you give us a little bit, this is going to be the re, we're actually recalling in the existing bonding on this? And the reason we're doing this is, or?
So, this is coming back around. We looked at this back in April, April and May timeframe. And at that point in time, we were looking at advanced refunding on these bonds. And when June came around, interest rates had increased to a point where it wasn't looking like we were going to meet our minimum requirement for advanced refunding. At this point in time, we're looking at a current refunding on this bond. This bond's callable in February. And we're projecting, at this point in time, savings for taxpayers of around $100,000 over the next five years. At that point in time, when we had looked at it back in June, it was a savings projected at about $90,000. So, we're almost up about $20,000 from where we were anticipating being at that point in time. So, this resolution is the first process, a piece of that. So, tonight, we're authorizing the sale of bonds. The actual sale will take place in October, October 16th, which is within that 90-day window, so that we can be a current refunding at that point in time.
Thank you.
So, in summary, this will benefit our taxpayers.
Yes. So, this will be a refunding for lower interest rates, similar to what you would do if you refinanced a mortgage.
Alright. So, we had a motion to accept this resolution by Perito, and it was seconded by Thornton. And this is resolution, so I'll ask clerk, again, to call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
The resolution passed. Mr. Hammer, if you could talk with us about the preliminary pay 2019 levy certification?
Yeah, so, good evening, Board Chair Delvo, board members, and Superintendent Heil. Tonight, we have our preliminary levy certification for approval. This is a, again, a two-step process, where tonight, like customarily we've done for as long as I've been here, we've preliminarily certified the maximum on our levy. So, this will come back again. We're certifying preliminarily the levy that will show up on our taxpayers' property tax statements here in November. And we will then follow back and final certify this in our December meeting at our, it'll be the third Tuesday of the month in December, when we'll hold our TNT, Truth and Taxation Hearing. So, tonight, we're looking at where we're at. We're looking at between a 7.5% and 8% increase on the overall levy, which is largely driven by property tax increases and this erosion of equalization that's happening at the state level. So, largely driven, there's no changes from the standpoint of what's going on from a district perspective on the levy. But property tax growth is up about, market values are up about 10% right now, which has increased the levy for the school district.
So, taxpayers may see an increase, but it's not because the school district
Yes.
increased the funds, it's because the property values are at a higher, and it's all a percentage.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the preliminary pay 2019 levy certification?
Move to approve the preliminary payer levy certification?
Second.
Moved by Riddles, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next, we have, excuse me, I'm going to ask Jennifer Carlson, I'm sorry, Gleisman, to come up and review the second reading of policies. So, as we do each month, we review policies for a first reading. So, we go through a cycle each year, so that we are covering our policies and ensuring that they are up to date and include any statutory changes, et cetera, that happen at the state level. And this is the second reading on the policies that you're going to review.
Thank you, Board Chair Delvo, board members, Superintendent Heil. I am here presenting Policies 401, Equal Opportunity Employment. Policy 413, Harassment and Violence, and the corresponding form. Policy 419, Tobacco-Free Environment. Policy 421, Gifts to Employees and School Board Members. I attended last month's meeting, and there were no changes from the first reading, so I'm asking that the board approve the policies as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the policies, the second reading of the policies as presented?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved by Perito, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. We're now at the Consent Agenda portion of our, of our meeting. The Consent Agenda includes routine items, including the minutes of the regular school board meeting and work session held on August 21st, 2018, monthly financial reports, and new contracts, amendments, leave of absences, terminations, resignations, and retirements, the statewide health improvement program agreement, school board priorities, and superintendent search job, search chair job description. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Moved to approve, though I would like to point out one retirement that we have this month, Cynthia Weber. She's been with the district since 2003, and we certainly hope her, I wish her well in her retirement.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Moved by Riddles, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Mr. Hammer, if you could review our student enrollment for the year?
So, this is our First Friday Report that we're looking at today, so we'll keep that in mind. As we look at the numbers where we currently sit, we are right at about where we budgeted for the First Friday. And we will continue to monitor these as we go. They will become more mature as we get into the coming months, but it's a first look at where we sit today.
Alright, any questions on Mr. Hammer's report? If not, we'll move on to the next reports from school board members. If we could, I'd like to invite up Laura Seifert-Hurtling. And we have some first readings of policies this month. And we have some first readings of policies this month.
Good evening, Board Chair Delvo, members of the board, and Superintendent Heil. I am here tonight to discuss the first reading of two school board policies. Policy 707, which is the transportation of public school students. And there are just a few changes. And they're mostly just some legal changes in the area on our homeless students. And it strikes out some things about the length of transportation that we will transport. So there's just some changes in that one. And then Transportation Policy Number 708, Transportation of Non-Public Students. This just has some rewording in it, and it strikes out the language of special education student. And it states, "Students with disabilities" is the big change in that one.
All right. Thank you. We'll review those for next month.
Thank you.
Reports from school board members. There are a number of committees throughout the state that school, that school board members represent the Fridley School District on. And this is when we do reports on the meetings that happened over the last month. The first report is from me. I represent Fridley on the Northeast Metro 916 School Board. And at that meeting, they reviewed a special education dashboard. So one of the things that the 916 district is doing is trying to improve that partnership with their member districts so that our, both the 916 school board as well as our school board, has a good understanding of the data and the things that are happening with the students that are being placed in 916. So we are a member district of District 916, and some of our students go there for special education services. So this is aimed at helping to reduce costs and to have a better understanding of the interventions that they're doing at a quick glance so that we can be more thorough in our planning and questions of the district so that we understand all the things that are happening there. District 916 has a new finance director. And he came to District 916 from the Minnesota Department of Education. And so very excited to welcome him on board. They also did their customary committee assignments for that board. A really exciting piece that is happening, there is a new psychiatric residential treatment facility being built in St. Francis. And the 916 district is going to be the educational provider for this residential treatment facility. That's their specialty area. And so that is slated to open next year. I have a correction. It's in the St. Francis School District. The actual facility will be in East Bethel. So I just need to clarify that. So that's really exciting in terms of the support services for our students who need a psychiatric residential treatment facility and that they get that solid education while they're in that facility so they don't get far behind as they're working through the issues that they're getting some assistance with. So that is all I have on 916. Next up, I'll invite Dr. Heil to give a report on the Association of Metropolitan School Districts.
Thank you. So I attended the AMSD meeting on August 31st, and they had several items they covered. So first, there was approval for the AMSD Operating Reserve Fund policy. And then they had two speakers as well. Our speakers, Chris Edmondson and Lori Gravina, shared information on how to have candidate engagement and relationship building. So it was a very interesting topic on ways that people can engage our Minnesota House candidates this fall and how to go about being comfortable with asking questions to become well-informed voters. Our second presentation was from Dr. Bill Morrison. It's from the Morris Leatherman Company, and it was on consensus solutions in a polarized state. So basically, the Lieberman Company collects data that is beneficial to schools and several different topics. And he shared information on that. So it was information that schools can use from anywhere. Who agrees with state-funded pre-K to suggestions on if we agree to start before Labor Day, which was a big no. So that was 60% opposed, 33% support, as well as should the state pay total cost of special education. So it was a very informative surveys that was taken, and it always gives you a really good perspective on what people are thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Important future school board dates. We have a number of committees coming up. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting on September 19th at 6:15 PM at the Northwest Integration School District office. The Schools for Equity in Education is September 21st at 9:00 AM, excuse me, at the Radisson Hotel in Roseville. The Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting is October 3rd at 6:00 PM at the Bel Air School in White Bear Lake. The AMSD Board Meeting is October 5th at 7:00 AM at the Ties Conference Center. And the Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting is October 16th at the Fridley High School Media Center. And the work session is from 5:30 PM, the open forum at 7:00, and the business meeting at 7:30 PM, all in the Fridley High School Media Center. That is all we have on our agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
Second. Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned at 8:09. Thank you, and see you next month.